Welcome all to the Monday, June 17th meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. Attendance by the planning board members, as you can see, are in person and remote. Both types of attendance shall count towards quorum. This meeting will still be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use the Zoom link, you will need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application. You'll need the webinar ID to join by phone only. While conducting hybrid meetings, we will endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. While the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and some in person, public participants invited to speak by the chair will also be on video and in person. Public participants joining by Zoom will be muted and with no video feed from them, public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. For general meetings, not public hearings, and only for items under which the chair solicits public comment, members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a question via text chat, provided they include their full name and address for the public record. They can also submit their questions in writing via email to dped@easton.mass.us. The chair reserves the right to respond to questions during a live meeting, but may limit the time for such activities. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards via email and will be incorporated into the meeting minutes. All votes on all matters will be by roll call. For public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function found under Participants from Zoom or make a request with the Q&amp;A function. If you're joining by phone only, you can press star nine to raise your hand. When stating your testimony, please state your name and address for the record. The chair reserves the right to designate a specific point of the hearing at which testimony may be offered. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing itself. The chair reserves the right to end testimony for any untimely or off-topic comments, rather. Lastly, when all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn, signaling the end of the meeting. All participants will be disconnected from the meeting at that time. To start our meeting tonight, we will conduct a roll call. Gettle.
Here.
Wolf.
Present.
Kid.
Present.
Weeks.
Here.
Ziggman.
Here.
And Stetson is here as well. Thank you all. The first item on the agenda tonight, I believe, is a request for a continuance. This is a continued public hearing at 149 Lincoln Street. I will accept a motion.
Move to continue 149 Lincoln Street, Carter Estates subdivision to July 29th, 2024.
Got it, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Gettle.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Ziggman.
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. All right. The next item on the agenda is another public hearing. This is a new one that will have to be opened up. This is 531 Foundry Street, special permit, two-family home, Hammerhead LLC. Mickey, would you do the honors, please?
Just read it all?
Yes.
Okay. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 9 and Section 11, MGL, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on June 17th, 2024, at 6:30 PM on the application received from Hammerhead LLC for a special permit, two-family home, under the Eastern Town Code, Chapter 235 zoning, 235-56 special permits to allow the creation of a two-family home located at 531 Foundry Street, Eastern Mass, assessors map 44U Lot 37. This public hearing will be conducted at the Town Hall, 136 Elm Street, and remotely via Zoom. Zoom meeting link will be contained within the posted agenda at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Copy of the application and plan may also be viewed on the town website. This notice is also available at www.maspublicnotices.org.
Thank you, Mickey. Do we have anyone here to present?
Good evening, everybody. Gary Barniky, managing member.
If you could just come over to the... Yep, thank you.
Gary Barniky, managing member, Hammerhead LLC, 531 Foundry. If it's all over the board, if I approach, I could hand out.
Please. That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you'll note, the photograph that I provided you is the house as it is existing today. With the application, there was also a photograph that I had photoshopped in the exact same size and manufactured window to put centered in the second floor of the barn next to that upper, I guess they're calling it a hay bale or a hay mow window, the green section, which will be retained. We're doing that for a number of reasons. One, for egress, because that is where the master bedroom is located in the second unit. Also cross ventilation and also for view to be able to see, you know, anybody who's maybe driving in the driveway to be picked up and wants to look out from upstairs, there'd be no other way to do so. So, but what we've done is we're using the exact same window, so it keeps in the same style with the same trim that's used on the house. Basically, it's identical to the ones that are there. I was reading through some of the comments, and I just wanted to be clear upfront that the house as you see it now is going to be retained. It's going to be repainted exactly in the same color. We've been working with the previous homeowner, Kelly Barker. He's been very helpful. He's actually had some original trim milled, and he's had it stockpiled because he was anticipating doing the same kind of work. So we're going to be using the trim that he's already had milled to address some of the other things. The columns are being retained, and really nothing's going to change other than just the addition of the one window. All the same colors. We're keeping the barn door. We're keeping the hayloft door. Keeping it in the same green color as well. So from the street, as you drive by, it won't look any different. And go ahead and interrupt me at any time if a question pops up.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are you doing any changes outside? Landscape, parking, anything?
For parking, as you'll note, because trying to get out on the Foundry Street, as you know, trying to back on is just, you don't want to do that. And so currently, there's no way... There is a way you can back into this turnaround area here and then nose out. But the way the plan is laid out, you have the first two parking spaces for the first unit, these two parking spaces where the turnaround is now for the second unit, and we're proposing a circular driveway. So entering and exiting now becomes much more easy than it ever had been before. So no matter who's living there, wherever they park, there's still access to be able to back in, turn around, and then nose out onto Foundry Street. So I'll just run through the brief that we did. Basically, it follows along with zoning. Any of the social, economic, and community needs which are served by the proposal. So the existing home is going to be converted into a two-family. One's going to be a three-bedroom, one's going to be a two-bedroom. This is going to give first-time homeowners and those folks looking to downsize the opportunity to stay in the town for a more affordable way of being here rather than having to stay in a single-family home. It's really conveniently located toward, for any of the businesses and so forth, right along the area. We're not far off of Five Corners as well. And my understanding is at some point in the future, there's going to be a widening in sidewalks and so forth, which is going to make it even easier to access the businesses that are really right nearby. With regard to traffic flow and safety, as I mentioned, we're going to do a circular driveway, which is going to really increase the safety of being able to pull in and out. Number three, adequacy of utilities and other public services. So as you know, 106 Foundry Street had the sewer system put into it, and we're proposing to connect on to that. So we have, both units will have tunnel water, both units will be accessing, and contributing to the betterment of expenses of the septic system that was put in on Foundry Street. Sewer, sorry. Habit. Neighborhood character, as we just spoke about, I'm not changing the facade of the house. I'm going to keep it that same antique look that it's always been.
That deck is already there, the one in the back?
Pardon?
Yes. Is the deck or the back already there?
Yes.
You are not making any changes?
No. And again, this was, this brief was written in conjunction with our engineer, who's been on the site and mapped everything out. Does, there's no existing wetlands or any other natural resources that are going to be affected within 100 feet of the parcel. The runoff isn't going to change because the roof's not going to change. So all that, any gutter work that needs to be done that's existing, that'll be repaired. If it needs it, will be done. Number six. It's going to increase the tax base, the sewer betterment funds, number first-time home buyers and downsize opportunities, as mentioned in the first paragraph. It'll be maintained privately for landscape maintenance, no removal. There won't be any impact or adverse effect towards town services.
Will the driveway remain gravel or will you pave it?
It'll be paved. Because right now, it's paved, and there's some stone in the turnaround. I think there was some stone in the turnaround area. But that whole circular driveway, it'll all get repaved and regraded so that there are no issues with any water. It'll be shed to the side.
So what is your goal of draining? What would be draining after you put the circular driveway?
The little bit of issue, we're talking about just this hook section right here, and there's plenty of landscape right there to take any of the runoff. We could pitch it away from the street anyway, just so there wouldn't create any problems. But you'll see on the inner part here, there's an existing stone wall, and all the existing vegetation, we're going to maintain on both sides of it.
Right. They're warming for not anticipating drainage and water increases. I don't know what goes on, what she's thinking about. Every time you out, they're going to...
Oh, I didn't realize that he was on. I see that Peter Lavoy, our engineer, is on. If there's any questions regarding drainage, we could address it to him. He might have a better idea.
Mr. Lavoy, can you hear us? I think you're on mute.
I can hear you. I could not hear the question.
So the question presented, the question presented is, to what extent have you considered whether, you know, some additional drainage issues might arise from the added driveway, the hooked driveway?
Right. So Gary had mentioned that from the new portion, which is that hooked area, we are going to slope the driveway into the, into the site and not out onto Foundry Street. So any runoff that is generated will go into that grass area behind or towards the landscaping area and away from the street. We want to, we want to make sure that no runoff from our site will go out into, into the street. So we will kind of grade that entrance back into the grass area, and then it would leach into the, into the grass area and leach into the ground.
Are we able to, are you able to add something about that onto the plan? So that, so that it's visible on the plan, that there'll be some sort of sloping in that direction?
Yeah. I could, I could add some grading to ensure that the, that the runoff will go into the site and not out onto the street. I can do that. That's, that's a minor change.
It's important because I don't know, when in the future, they say eight years, it will be a walkway in front of...
Amos, it's, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's really hard to hear you. Do you have a microphone?
Put that, yeah.
Oh, much better.
It will be a walkway in front of this house. So it's important for the drainage not to affect that on the future.
I understand. Okay, so I can, like I said, I can add grades so that I know and ensure the planning board that no runoff from the site will go towards the walkway. The way the, the way the lot is, it kind of slopes back from the street a little bit. There is kind of a low area back in that grass area towards the stone wall. So I can, I can add some grades along there, and that should ensure that no runoff will go out into the road.
Okay. Stephanie, did you have any comments?
So Mr. Beniki has been addressing the retention of the historical character of the house and the exterior and no changes. In my report, I indicate that there were conversations that he does plan to take advantage of the allowance for additional units, residential units on the site, making it up to a five-unit multifamily. So, and we've, we've talked about that. He knows what the requirements are, the standards. Five would be the maximum that would be allowed and can, and also that the site would accommodate. It's critical because in order to take advantage of that, you have to preserve the exterior of the building. And I heard you run through all the things that you're going to keep, the exterior wood, all the architectural, both useful and decorative features.
That's correct.
And the fenestration. And so you will be, because right now, looking at the pictures and driving by, it's in need of paint. So you will be painting?
Probably next week or the week after they start. I'm just trying to get as much of the clapboards and the shakes that were there to be replaced before the paint crew comes in. So that's what we've been doing.
Good. Okay, that's fine.
Stephanie, I have a question for you. Should all these details related to preservation of the historical nature of this house be on the drawing, so we can...
Yeah, they probably should provide. I mean, again, they're seeking a special permit at this point for the two-family. But in order to be able to take advantage of the additional units, they will need to demonstrate at that time when they come in with a special permit for that, they'll need to demonstrate that they have preserved the exterior. So it would be helpful.
I can tell you that...
The reason to keep it on the drawing is because the building inspector, whoever is going to be working there, needs to have, what is that we decided? So your explanations, they're very good, needs to go into the drawings.
Wait, I just want to make sure I understood that last piece. So there's going to be a subsequent special permit for the bonus, for the density bonus?
Yeah, that is correct.
That's the intention.
For this, for this building or?
For this building.
For, on the back, where, where the deck is, is there'll be a proposed three, like basically, it would look like three units side by side.
Separated or separate foundations?
Separate, attached but separate.
But that's not what you have before the board.
That's correct.
That, so I'm...
All right, I see. Well, because that was going to be my next question, was how are you fitting all these units in that, in that existing structure? So the answer is, you're doing this in two phases, essentially.
That's correct.
All right. I understand now. So what exactly is going on inside this building now, I guess for this phase? And then if you could just expound on what, what you're going to be adding later down the road, just so we have an understanding.
And I'm not sure, in the online, when we uploaded, we uploaded the diagrams. I did make copies of the diagrams. I didn't know whether or not they'd be put up or not, but that's fine. So on the left, we have, we call it the existing house. And on the right, we call that the barn.
Barn, right.
In between, basically, south of this deck, there's some rooms. There's an existing laundry and kitchen, which will stay with the barn unit. And then there's a room that they're called, that's been labeled in one of the plans, a piano room, which would be the new kitchen. And right where those two meet, there's a single wall, right in this little small section right here. And that wall would be done with, you know, V-Base fire code and in conjunction with what the fire chief would want to see and so forth. This unit here would have its own laundry, powder room over here. Upstairs remains unchanged, except we're going to be adding the kitchen and then basically the powder room and laundries for that half. And then the barn unit upstairs right now, which is, and you see the photograph with a small green door is, they had already started to do some work up there. Basically, that's going to be a master suite with its own private bathroom, closet. The staircase goes down into basically a great room downstairs, and down there, there's plenty of room for another smaller bedroom. And then there's, it's really nice. It's wide entry going up into like the laundry area and the existing kitchen. It's really wide open space.
Okay, so that's basically what we're considering tonight. And then there'll be a second phase.
Right.
In which you're going to continue to preserve, you know, the exterior.
Yeah, what you'll see when we come back, you, you will see the house will have been, would already have been done. All right, we're in the process right now of changing out some of the trim that had broken that Mr. Barker had custom milled to match the stuff that was there. Matter of fact, he went and spent a lot of money to have the columns replaced with identical columns, had them custom milled and everything. And the original columns are still retained upstairs in the attic of the barn. So we have some of the originals as backups, if you will. So he's done a lot of work, and we're going to be using all of his trim to make it look exact if anything needs to be replaced. But by the time we come back, the front of the house, the whole house will be painted. We've already had it power washed. We're going to have it sanded and scraped and all that stuff. And it's, it's going to look beautiful before we even go to the next step. And then once that happens, we won't be touching the existing house.
And then where, how are you going to fit the, I mean, is there going to be additional parking?
Yeah, eventually what will happen is there'll be a drive coming right here. There's a lot of room between. As you know, this area right here is being developed currently. But there's, and there's a pretty good tree line right here, which we're going to retain. So you're going to be able to come back here in the driveway. And basically, the parking's just going to look off to the left like that. It's not going to go that far back. It's only going to be like, like a little spot. There's three coming around it like that. Each unit will have its own deck. We're looking at two-bedroom units, townhouse type of thing. Really much more affordable. We've already had, you know, people that know me and Aaron really showing some interest. And they're real, what they're, there's their children of people that already live in the town that are looking for something affordable, and there's already interest in it.
That's correct.
What's going on inside? Are you taking it down to the studs and insulating?
Oh, no.
Putting in the windows or no?
The prior owner, Mr. Barker, had everything insulated prior. All the floors, the original barn boards, which we're retaining. None of that's getting changed.
New electrical and plumbing?
He's had all that work done. It's been upgraded to breakers. New heating units, I think, that he's had done. He's, he's done a lot of work. He's very meticulous.
And these will be rentals as opposed to creating a condominium trust?
No, and we want to sell them as homes.
I see.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question about the window? The, the large window? Which, which is the one, you said it was photoshopped, which is the window?
That was one of the fixed pictures I uploaded onto the website. I might, I have it here. I can show it to you. I have it on my phone, if that's okay with you.
Suzanne, is it possible, can we pull up the picture? Or Stephanie, are we able to do that?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so that's, yeah, that's not in any of these.
Right, the same window as all of these, all of these are the same.
Yeah. And I just want Joanne and anyone in the public to be able to see what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Thank you. I drive by there all the time.
Is there a way to show this to your head?
Well, not from your phone. I don't think so. I don't think it'll...
Is that, are those the photos that are in the package?
No.
Yeah. They're online.
This one's in the app.
Okay, then I think I have them.
Okay.
I think I'm looking at them.
It needs some touch up.
I think I have to do a couple of things here. I think I have to log into Zoom.
I don't think that one's in the, that one's not in the binder, the one that they just showed us.
No, I know. I was telling her. She asked him as told it was. No, but it's on, it's in permadeyes, is what you're telling us, right?
Yeah, I have all the pictures here.
It's not there.
Can I use this to someone that would be able to put that on screen?
Well, that's what I'm in the process of.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, we're waiting for this. Do we have any other? Oh, please. Yeah?
Sue, this is already presented to the Historical? These plans have already been presented to the Historical Commission? Or, I'm just curious about what they thought about the window.
They are inside the...
Yeah, they commented and they said, I think they said one...
So Wayne commented on the Historical Commission. You haven't gone to the Historical Commission?
No, but they've commented on the application.
Full disclosure, I'm actually on the Historical Commission, but I've missed a few meetings, and I was wondering if this was the one that I missed at all.
So what is this, what is it saved under?
Do I understand that we need to... I don't remember. You want to look at the names?
No. They had commented on this, so I was just curious what they thought about the addition of the window.
In their notes, they didn't mention, because we've gone through their notes, and I take it rest their concerns that the Historic Commission had. I didn't see anything in here about the additional window.
So we're looking at photos, right?
Yes.
I wanted to make sure that porch columns, siding, windows, shutters, chimneys, that they all have the print.
So the photos that are...
Stephanie, excuse me, what is the formality with that? We get these comments into our system, and we, they, we require approval. We require that these comments be included in the drawings. What do we do with that? So they talk to them and they ask.
Is ours historical?
The Historic Comments. Should they be added to the record?
Do they, I'm sorry, they're part, they are part of the record? I'm not sure I understand the question, but...
Well, I think there are two parts of it. So we don't generally read them in because they're, they are part of the record, so that's how we consider them. But I think to Amos's point, he was concerned about whether or not we need to put a condition into any decision on this for historical approval.
So that's why in my report, I made sure I mentioned in...
I read it, but I didn't know what to do.
Yeah, so, so, but thank, thank you for asking. So yes, I would suggest, the decision doesn't have... What the, my suggestion for the decision and the condition would be that we make note that the applicant has indicated they have a desire to come back and take advantage of the section of the code that would allow them to add the additional units, but that any changes to the exterior would negate or likely would negate their ability to do that. So you're issuing the special permit for creation of the two-living units now. That's what this permit is for, making, converting this to a two-family. And then they will need to come back. And that second permit, if issued, will supersede this because they'll have changed it to a multifamily.
So the condition for this is don't touch the exterior.
It don't, well, you don't touch the exterior and expect that unless, because you can't... For this permit, I don't think you can because it's not a requirement for converting this to a two-family unless, I mean, you can strongly suggest that no changes be made. It is a special permit. You see what I'm saying, Thomas?
Not exactly.
That they could come and they could propose to make it changes to the exterior for the two-family, and the board could approve that. But knowing that they want to take advantage of the special zone that would allow them to make it a multifamily, they have to, they have to retain the historic aspect of it. And I think memorializing that in your special permit for the two-family makes sense.
So again, we approve without saying anything. So again, we approve without saying anything about the historical nature for these two?
No, I think, I think Stephanie's saying, yes, we should, we should make mention of it.
Wasn't clear. Your expression wasn't clear.
All right, well, why don't we, this is a public hearing. While Stephanie's looking up the photos, why don't we just check in to see, let's open it up for public comment at this point. And Suzanne, do we have anyone?
Yeah.
Great. If you could promote him.
Hi, this is Dale Karister. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Twenty-one South Street. As much as I'm sorry to see Kelly and Lisa Marie leave our neighborhood, I'm in favor of the applicant's proposal here. I think it will add to the vitality of our area. I love the fact that they'd be preserving this. It's a beautiful, beautiful home. And the idea that you now have, you know, dividing up into two units, you know, having perhaps another young family or whatever it might be, I think would be a, you know, a boost for the area. And for what it's worth, just as an update, you know, as you know, I've been very vocal in connection with the old Forge project across the street. There's been a number of young families that moved in across the street. Just two of them moved in this past weekend. And it's wonderful to see young families with dogs and so forth adding to the vitality of the area. And I think this project can substantially help what we're trying to achieve in this area of that walkable pedestrian-friendly village-type area. So I'm very much in support of the applicant's project here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karister.
I am not seeing an attachment that has that photo.
Suzanne, do we have anyone else with a hand raised?
That's up to the chair.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, and Joanne, just, just so you know what we're looking at, is basically there's a, there's a superimposed window at sort of the, the center point of the barn, where you see the, it's kind of like a green, I don't know if it's green or black.
Green hay door.
It's a green hay door on the right side of it. So there's sort of a superimposed window towards the center of it. That's what we've been looking at in here.
Okay, that's what I gathered, but thank you.
And it's the same style as the slender windows on the second story of the main part of the house.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other questions from board members at this point?
I just, I'm going over the comments really quick. It just says incomplete, but just that the, the, the hay mo doors and the garage barn doors will stay kind of the same?
Exactly the same, same coloring, same everything. Matter of fact, Kelly has the paint codes and everything and labels from the original cans that he's preserved. I mean, he's become a really good friend and, you know, he's, he's staying there while we're doing the work. And I love having him there. He's been overseeing stuff and he goes and he gets the trim and everything that's supposed to go. It's, it's been great having him there.
Excellent.
I do, I have another comment. And I believe it sounds like Mr. Beniki is aware of this, but the additional units will trigger a privilege fee. So you would need to get in touch with the
I've read that, yeah.
DPW or, yep.
Sure.
And get that in process.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't have your
Is the basement in good condition in this house? Is stone basement?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. No, this is, it's in really no shape.
If anything needs to be re-pointed, it will be, keep in mind, these are also going up for sale, so they're going to have to pass home inspections for the whole life. So everything
Well, I, I have a house in Downey Street, but it's facing
One question around where you're putting in the proposed curve of the driveway. It looks like you're going to have to demolish some part of the wall. Are you going to keep the rest of the wall or are you demolishing the whole?
Oh, we're going to retain the wall.
You're going to, you're going to
As a matter of fact, it's hard to see, but from the wall to the street, there's a fair amount of grass already and some shrubs there on the street side of the wall. So we're not going to
Taking out as little wall as possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
I live in the area as well and my whole yard has got all the, the old stone walls that we've preserved.
Okay. Any further questions before we throw it to the applicant to see if they want us to close the public meeting? All right, well, I'm going to throw it to you guys then. Would you like us to close the public hearing?
If we could just clarify, we'd like to have the monitor.
Sure.
Just to clarify from the comments for this evening, it sounds like you'd like grading shown on the driveway to show that no runoff will go out to Route 106 Foundry Street. And the, the other concern seems to be the exterior view from Route 106 to remain as is today, with the exception of the addition of the one window at the front second floor of the barn area. Does that sound like it covers all the concerns?
Well, so this is, this is one of those funny parts where we haven't voted yet.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we can't, we can't talk about this or vote until
Okay.
we close the public hearing. But I, you know, I mean, I, I think you've heard this, it sounds like you've heard the same things that I have. And I can't go much further than that.
I just want to make sure there weren't any other questions.
Sure.
So Aaron, you just said the view
Yep.
from the road.
Yes.
But we're talking about the exterior of the build
The exterior of the whole thing. I could change that.
Yeah, okay.
I was just trying to have something
Yeah, so
written down for
Yep.
a subject to
So the exterior of the building will not change.
Yep. Thank you.
As, as viewed from Foundry Street.
So what would you guys like us to do? Would you like us to close the public hearing?
Like the board on it and approve it.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion?
Second, Wolf.
Great. Any further discussion on the motion to close? Hearing none, Ketum?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well? Okay, the hearing's been closed. Do we have any, any discussion? And it sounds to me like the, the two conditions that were discussed prior to the closing of the public hearing makes sense. And I mean, you know, if there's no additional comments, I will
Bob, did that include retaining the stone wall?
Well
I know they didn't mention it.
No, they did mention
As a condition?
Well, we, they, they mentioned that they were going to be taking down
Right.
parts of the, the wall to create the, the opening.
A minimal
A minimal amount.
Minimal amount, I think is important.
Yeah.
It's part of the character of the
If, if, if there's, if there is a motion that includes that as a condition, accept a motion.
I would make it, but I'm trying to remember all of the pieces in the motion.
We're all worse.
So I think the first, the first one that had been discussed was including on the plan some, some grading to show that there won't be runoff onto the street. The second one was that there would be, you know, no changes to the exterior so that there would be essentially the same view from the street. And then the third would be that, you know, they only remove enough of the stone wall as, as is needed to create the opening from the street.
So moved?
Oh, pardon me, you said that so fast. I, I was going to also say, Amos had asked for elevations showing the materials as they exist today. Is that something the board would like to see?
If, if
And to memorialize
If we are saying that not wanting to be changed, you know, you don't need it. If they were to change anything, whatever is being wanted to be changed, needs to be a middle.
Right, right. So you're not, you weren't, I'm, I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood. I thought you might have been asking for the elevations to show what exists today to memorialize what's there.
No, I mean, that's without
Okay.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the table.
What should, what should we approve?
Hold on, we, we still need a second. We still need a second.
Second.
She put the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Kevin, second.
Okay, great. All right. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, Ketum?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Good luck, gentlemen. We'll see you again soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want your papers back?
You can hold them.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a preliminary review for 290 Turnpike Street. This is a proposed special permit planned business development. Nick Marioni. Welcome. And when you're ready, just please step to the mic and introduce yourselves and your address.
I'm Nick Marioni, 354 West Street, West Bridgewater. And I'm here with Kevin from ET Engineering. He's going to explain the plan for you first. I'm representing the owner, he's representing the owner.
Great.
Hi, my name's Kevin Davis. I'm representing ET Engineering, like Mr. Marioni said.
Mr. Davis, if I could trouble you to please step to the mic, just so people can hear me. There you go.
Name, name and address.
So Kevin Davis, representing ET Engineering. So the site we're talking about today is 290 Turnpike Street. It's located near the intersection of Washington Street and Turnpike Street. Currently, there exists a single commercial building on the property towards the east side. Two existing detention basins exist on the south and north end. And there is adequate parking for the existing commercial structure. What we're looking today is to get feedback from the planning board. We're currently proposing an additional commercial structure located towards the entrance of the property and a maintenance building on the south end of the property. The commercial building will just be a storefront property. All setbacks will be maintained within the town regulations. Lot coverage will be maintained. All drainage will be redirected to the detention basin and expanded to deal with any additional drainage required under the NRCS TR-55. There's an existing septic system located on the west side of the property. An additional septic system will be placed for the proposed commercial building. Everything will be AAB, ADA compliant. So we're just looking today to see any feedback, comments from the planning board, anything you'd like to see so that we can design one for a concurrent filing of a special permit and a site plan review.
Thank you. Stephanie?
So the one comment that I have, and it's in my report, was that when this project was initially approved, there was a lot of discussion by the board at that time about the landscaping out front and trying to have it look a little more naturalized.
Okay.
With this particular site, you're, you're coming from the more industrialized area into the residential district. So it really helps soften that hardscape view. They have not shown on the plan, and again, this is preliminary. So certainly on the final plans that get submitted, I think they should show the trees that they are intending to cut because it certainly looks like some of the new plantings that were done would be in the way of the new structure.
So you'd like to see a landscaping plant?
And then what replacement for that landscaping? And again, kind of remembering that the board was looking for something that looked a little more naturalized and not necessarily, you know, a manicured French garden.
Interesting.
You are behind the, or near the residential neighborhood right there?
Correct, sir. Yes.
That might require some privacy issues and all that.
They, yeah, they're putting, so you haven't shown My recollection, Amos, isn't that they have houses immediately adjacent, but it
We're maintaining the site setback, but yeah, if you're talking about these dwellings over here.
Location of the dwellings?
Yeah, there's, the residential units are shown right here, south of this proposed building. Well, we could easily do a green screening along the south end of the building to help alleviate any concerns regarding that.
There, wait, there are residential
Yeah.
buildings just to the south?
All, all this neighborhood is just near. They are developing this.
Oh, right. Okay.
You'll remember when we approved that, that the baseball or whatever that was, the sport facilities there, there was discussions about, I think it was a dumpster or something like that. We need to screen that. Now it's more serious on the dumpster. That neighborhood is right there. They were selling the houses, so it's a new neighborhood.
I was looking at it just from the front and I was just seeing the southeastern motor.
You're referencing that overview.
Yeah. That's the, it's the southeastern motor right there. Okay.
So if I may, in response to that, we are zoned for what we're trying to do. This is under a comprehensive permit, so they knew this was a commercial site when they bought there. Having said that, that doesn't mean we're insensitive to their privacy and we would, we would
We need, we need to be good neighbors.
We would work to buffer them as best we could, but we're still a commercial property.
Yeah, yeah. We cannot do anything about that. You are on your rights to build. We just need to accommodate and compromise so everyone is happy after that.
Well, the good, the good news to that is that the successful, this, of this building, which has ended up with three tenants, a baseball, indoor baseball place, an indoor basketball place, and a fitness center. We didn't see that coming. We thought this was going to be an industrial place. And since that happened, we've had a lot of demand for similar uses, whether sporting goods store, other crossfit things, so it's
In my opinion, it's progress. You cannot stop it. You shouldn't stop it. You should actively promote it. But then together with that, we need to figure out how we harmonically do this, so no one suffers
Right.
as a result of it.
And Bob, I just have one, one other comment, which is that you will need to, I don't know if you need additional stormwater treatment,
There is actually
but you'll need to provide the drainage calculations and plans and everything demonstrating that you comply.
Yeah, on the south end, we are expanding the existing drainage system.
Now it's a dumpster.
And we'll show calculations for that with the raws rates and proving that exactly.
I see this.
Stephanie, this is a, I think, a question for you. So I noticed on the plans that part of the site is an aquifer protection overlay district. Does that have any special considerations that the planning board needs to consider? Or is that just kind of accounted for in the, in the first initial development?
So it, it dictates the uses. You can't have a use that would generate or use hazardous materials on the site, which they're not proposing. You're proposing like uses to what's there now with the recreation
Yeah, I think they're all special permitted uses anyway. We would have to come before you were the tenant, which we didn't initially.
I think one of the things I need to look at, you mentioned this, but I, I think because it's a planned business district, it's a planned business development, it's allowed. But I will double check and make sure that the planned business development is allowed in the aquifer protection district.
We had to do some special treatment with this septic system. We had to build a special septic system because of that district.
To handle
They may have an alternative septic system.
Higher nitrogen treatment, right?
Correct.
So how many retail outlets there?
Don't, don't know yet. All we're looking to do is, is get the, the footprint approved. Then we're going to go to marketing it. And it may be one tenant, it may be two or three. We, we don't know yet. And we thought the big building was going to be 11. It turned out to be three, so.
What is southeast of your property? I see, is that a pond?
This is already that
Yeah.
That's a wetland.
No, no. There is a, I can see it.
That is a wetland, yes. I was thinking of this.
Wetlands and then end up on a pond there.
Further southeast.
Further southeast.
Right. It's a wetland.
That's a conservation needs to take a look at that.
If they're proposing new work in the buffer zone, yes.
I believe the buffer zone showed right here in orange. And the proposed expansion is in fact outside that buffer zone. Not planning to work inside this area.
So I mean, I guess that's a good question is, that's the, right, that's the existing detention basin there. So they would already have a permit from the Conservation Commission.
Okay. That's the answer. Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question about the parking spaces? It said 70 parking spaces provided, but I don't, where is the 70 on it? I'm not sure.
So that's, that's a combination of the existing and proposed. And the new parking spaces are, can be added into this area up here. And we're realigning the once leased of that so that it's in harmony with the new layout of the traffic flow conditions.
This is what they have now.
Okay.
Yeah, it would sometime help to put maybe what is now and what is going to be after that. That probably helps.
Like a before and after?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, we can, we can definitely do that.
Dotted line maybe or something.
An existing conditions plan needs to be provided when they submit their application.
Yep. I can see it on Google Maps.
It's amazing what it can do now. I, I just don't recall. What kind of lights were on the, the back of the existing building?
They're, they were approved by the ZBA. They had the down lighting. It's DocSky friendly.
Yep.
DocSky compliant, but DocSky friendly. And they were wall mounted.
I mean, I don't, maybe, maybe it is on here.
They're all around the building. You see them on the side of the front if you drive back to the same lights.
Yeah. Did we talk about that? Okay.
This is a, this is a very preliminary.
No, I understand that. Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I guess, I guess the question is, you know, are they on the right track here? I mean, obviously, they're, they're going to, we've raised the sensitivities to the neighbors, which I think is fair.
Light is one of them. Noise is the other one. And privacy is the third one. Yeah. These three things need to be satisfied, so some kind of good compromise. Don't kill your business, but.
Well, I think, but.
Work together with them. We can work together.
Yeah, of course. And I mean, you know, it's, it's, you're right, there's a residential neighborhood there, but it is a commercial area. And, you know, there's the, there's the, you know, there's the southeastern motor car sales right next door.
Yeah.
This is pretty, pretty big. And there's the existing. I mean, do we, but just generally speaking, because I think they're, you know, kind of looking for our temperature here, does this look like something that, you know, with some fine tuning that makes some sense for this location?
My opinion, yes.
Okay.
I'm turning it.
Who's in the existing building? What businesses are in the existing?
Baseball, indoor baseball, indoor basketball, and a gym. More of a specialized gym. It's more of a posing gym, you know.
I have a comment, but I don't think it's very significant, but you should consider this. On rush hour, getting out of there in the other direction, the left turn, it will be kind of difficult.
Yeah, no, there's no question. Fortunately for us right now, the, the gym is a morning business. They're in there early in the morning, like six o'clock. The baseball and the basketball are more after school evening business. So, and, and there's a lot of drop off of the kids. And the baseball takes them outside in the summer. They're not even there. On the good days, they take them outside.
That's a very busy intersection.
But we don't know what's going to go in the new space. That's why we probably have to go to ZBA for a special permit for each tenant like we did for these.
Do you know what kind of business will be on this?
We don't. We know who we're talking to. You know, we've, we've been talking to a sporting goods store. We've been talking to a CrossFit. We've been talking to a gymnasium, a gymnastics studio. So there's a lot of interest to be near the other, to feed off the other people that are in there of like type of businesses. Okay. So, but we don't, we don't know that we can do anything until we know, we got to get the site plan approved first, then we can really market it. So we're just getting, like, like the chairman said, we're trying to get the, the temperature today. If we're, with that, we'll move forward in much more definitive drawings and information.
You need this to know if you have a business.
Yeah. Look, it sounds like an exciting project and maybe some good synergy there. It's, you know, I think you've gotten some feedback. We want to be sensitive to the neighbors, but I think it sounds like you guys are on the right track.
Thank you. And just to be clear, this building is maintenance only. There's no plumbing in it at all. It's just electric and overhead doors.
Is where the dumpster is there now?
The dumpster will be moved, I think, to this side of it.
Okay, the other side.
Okay. So it'll be more screened from the neighborhood, but the building, the building will be seen by the neighborhood, of course.
Could put two indoor tennis courts back to back of that building.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I think we got some pretty good feedback.
Yeah, I think it's, it's positive, you know, and be sensitive to the, to the plantings issue as well.
Yeah, all of those issues.
You know, we look, we look forward to seeing you guys again. All right. All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you for your time.
Whoops.
Okay. All right. Next, next on the agenda is meeting minutes.
Good to know.
Motion to accept the minutes of May 28th, 2024.
Second, Kid.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kettem?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. The last, last item on the agenda is sort of a joint chair and planning director update. We have, we've, we've been talking a little bit about kind of engaging in some fact finding on some potential new zoning ideas and just sort of, you know, using a little bit of the, the, you know, kind of the blueprint of the MBTA communities in terms of examining, you know, need, want of the community. And Stephanie and I have talked about a number of different ideas. And basically, we've kind of, I think if I could summarize, I think we've zeroed in on four very broad ideas. And I think the goal of what we would like is we'd like to just present you guys with those broad ideas and then maybe have someone run with an idea, talk to Stephanie, do some fact finding, maybe talk with some of the players, and then come back and report back. And if it looks like, one, two, all four of these ideas have some legs that are worth pursuing, let's open it up to the process that we had before and see if we can get something, you know, planned. And I think this isn't like, you know, this isn't something that's going to happen overnight. You know, I think that maybe we could get something done next year. But that's kind of the idea. And so when Stephanie and I have been talking, talking, we've kind of, I think narrowed it down to four broad categories. The first is single family zoning. The way that we've done it is, you know, for as long as I've been here anyway, with sort of one acre lots and, you know, certain widths and setbacks and things in light of the housing crisis, is that something we need to reevaluate? You know, we're sort of running out of developable land. Is that something we want to take a look at? That's point number one. Point number two, I guess I've broadly characterized it as ADUs. There have been a lot of communities that have been looking into two families like we saw here tonight. Maybe, you know, loosening up accessory dwellings and in-law apartments. Sort of a broad net there, but, but that is something that we thought made some sense to evaluate. The third one on my list would be taking another look at Main Street. I know we've looked there in the past few years. You know, we haven't really seen much going on there in terms of development. And I know I'm certainly interested to know why and if anything, you know, needs to be done to sort of stimulate that area. And then the fourth area would be sort of that Washington Street area, which we've, we've looked at a few different times. Kind of similar to Main Street. You know, I think maybe we need to reevaluate that area again. I know the last time we engaged, you know, in kind of an overhaul down there, the office market looked a lot different. And so, you know, the question is what, what makes sense for that area? If, and to see if any changes, you know, are needed there. So those are kind of the four. Stephanie, did I kind of?
No, that's, that's.
That's kind of what we talked about, right?
That is, yeah.
And so like.
There are at least two subjects that, that come to mind that maybe we should probably address in there. One is initiative for climate change. Okay? And there was on the pass and it was canceled and we didn't do anything about the photovoltaic. You remember?
The solar.
Because we have, we have the 250 kilowatts up, but we don't have anything to, to invite smaller farms.
Smaller scale on the property.
People that would like to, to have smaller fields that will, will do that. So, and in general, climate change, and it, it can be related to drainage, to all kind of other things that maybe come our way. And, and the other one, the other one that is a want and we need it and to some, somehow in Easton is a little deficient is community activity buildings and specifically senior centers. What we have is minimalistic and inviting. If you compare Easton with the surrounding communities, even not very rich like Foxborough, but even West Bridgewater, Tonton, Brockton even. And you see community buildings and senior centers that we pale in comparison. And it's a need in Easton. And I don't know if it has to do with zoning, maybe to certain extent, but.
A little bit.
But we need to figure out how that goes into the planning.
Okay. I mean, I think those are all good ideas. And certainly, we've talked about solar in the past.
Yeah.
And I know you're going to be reporting on the climate change.
Yes, first meeting on Thursday.
Well, I'll be interested to hear how that goes.
We need to be, how we align with that.
Well, I think it'll be great to have, you know, a planning board member sitting on that.
So I, I have a couple of thoughts on the community building and senior center. So a couple of things. One, we're going to be doing a master plan update. We're going to be doing a master plan update, a 10-year update. And the primary focus is going to be on, on housing. And we were going to focus on climate. There will be a climate piece of that, but of course, I think that's going to be fed apart from the master plan that's being worked on. And then the other piece was inclusion and equity. But I think that that ties into housing a lot and, and climate. It touches a lot of things. So one, we'll be working on it in that area. And I'm going to be working on kind of fleshing out how we're going to move forward on that. We do have funds for a consultant to work with us, but we'll probably form a small group and then do a lot of public outreach on that. So I think those are ways of bringing this in.
One other thing is going to happen when the police, the fire department, and the DPW move, there will be a lot of reshuffling, empty buildings. And so all that requires us to look at the planning and look at the zoning and what we're, what the heck we are going to do with that. So here we've come that community buildings for activities and all that. Because we have wonderful schools, but if you ask me, where you actually do activities on this town is a problem. I know, because I belong to the Lions and it's a problem to find places to do things.
Yep. So, so again, but I'm, I'm going to add to that because you mentioned the, the community buildings, the public buildings that will be coming up. So one of the grants that we applied for this year was a planning grant in a feasibility study to kind of figure, help figure that all out and what the best uses might be for that and how we proceed. Then the other is that we need to finalize the update to our open space recreation plan. And I think the community building, community center should be a core part of that. Should be something, so.
And now are these, are these typically?
This is great because it sounds like people who.
Within the schools, we are doing all the.
Before that would be interested in, in.
It's time to, Adam.
Updates and things.
One of the things too with inclusion and equity, a big piece of that is also belonging. That's another piece of it. And that just fits, I think, with all of it. It's just the belonging.
Yep.
Where you are. They're using it a lot more DEIB or a variety of acronyms.
Stephanie, are the consultant scopes for the climate change work or the master plan going to include any zoning direction? Or is that just going to be kind of a, a smaller part of the, the normal work that they do?
Well, the Climate Action and Energy Plan should be looking at zoning and should be looking at what opportunities to update the zoning bylaw to help address the issues.
I can give an example. When we approve the dealership on Washington Street, what my question is, is this building, that is a big building, ready for solar panels on the, on the, on the roof? Something that could be on the zoning if you, if you approve build big industrial buildings to mandate certain amount of, yeah.
Parking lots and even, you know, my husband and I talk a lot about, we have highways and that's not for us and everything to put. But, you know, why couldn't you put solar panels over the entranceway too? Your paved areas. And it helps reduce, I, some of the heat island that's created because you're absorbing that as energy that's going to be used. So yes, the zone, that will be part of it. Will be how, what, what zoning policies, what changes can be incorporated to help address the climate change. There are opportunities there and the, the same for the master plan. Because if we're talking housing, zoning, as Bob just mentioned, I mean, that's, that's one of the things we want to look at.
So Stephanie, I believe we do not have any standard on a bylaws about how much efficiency we are asking from new buildings. And we should. The degree of insulation, what they are using for heating and cooling, all that.
I think that.
Isn't that a building code issue?
Yeah. I.
We need to look at that.
That's not a zoning issue.
Yeah.
That's a building.
No, but.
But.
It's a building code issue, but there is a stretch code that the town could consider adopting that would make things even stricter than they already are. But I'm sure that they're going to look at that.
You're talking about the energy code though, right, Joanne?
No, so there's a building code and there's a stretch code version of that. And now there's, I forget what they're calling it, but like a stretch, stretch version.
Right.
Where the efficiencies are further pushed to what's, you know, considered good practice these days. The stretch code is.
I just want to be clear on what you're talking about, though. That you're talking about the, the new version of the energy code that's going in effect in a lot of communities on July 1st?
No, I'm talking about the actual building code.
But I think isn't the energy.
Right. The energy code will be part of the building code as of July 1st. At least that's my understanding. In a lot of communities, Easton has not adopted it from what I understand.
Oh, yes. So you're talking about the stretch, stretch code? Yeah, we're talking the same thing.
Yes, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
But from a zoning perspective.
Yeah, definitely.
There are things the board can do that isn't stepping into the, the other lane of building. And, and that is retaining trees or requiring that trees be planted. I mean, we, I get pushback frequently because, and we saw it here at one of the board meetings, I believe, when someone came and was asking, I don't think it was for the road acceptance, but the bylaw requires a retention of trees on, on. but the bylaw requires a retention of trees on, on new development, certain subdivisions. And not that Easton's going to have a lot of new subdivisions necessarily because there's not a lot of land. But it also requires that you have, every lot has at least three trees in the front yard with no, no further than 20 feet from the roadway. And frequently we will get, I will get complaints from developers that are coming to get their road acceptance done. And the trees weren't installed and, or, or that the residents will cut them. But, you know, that, that's an opportunity to help reduce, again, the heat island effect that you get. And, and maybe there's a shade tree requirement that the trees that are planted are providing shade along the roadway, which helps reduce that heat in effect, which occurs when you have very high.
All of that, yeah, all of that help, but efficiency on the building. Especially big buildings, not so much residential, but big buildings is extremely important.
Kind of tangentially, but just out of curiosity, does Easton participate either as a town or do the citizens' heat mapping initiatives that happen? I know it happens all over the Metro West. I don't know because it's, people go out on a day and they just record the temperatures and it gives you a fairly accurate kind of, it's pretty fascinating. They, um, they send out, ask for volunteers to go out and you just go out and you record the temperatures of where you are. And you can get these really great maps of areas where heat is, is, is a serious issue. Well, usually it's where you have, um, large paved areas. You have buildings that are, um, not reflecting the light, et cetera, et cetera. But it might be something to, to just kind of tangentially consider as well as we're looking into it. This is a great way to grab data. I think it happens like mid-July, but I can get more information on that.
If you could forward the intention. I mean, I, I experienced this on a regular basis in the summer when I was bicycling to work, that I'd come down Main Street when I'd leave because I don't, I, I will ride down Washington, but it's not my favorite thing to do and especially on a hot day. But even coming down Main Street, you have that heat. And I cross over and you have all that Stonehill land that's all forested. And it's a 10-degree temperature drop when it's 90 degrees out. And, you know, so that, that, that's just an example of something that the, the board can do. Solar orientation, making sure that we're, and again, we don't have big subdivisions, but making sure that the orientation and layout of the roads are consistent with solar orientation.
Well, an efficient building is also the one that allows you not to turn on the lights every time that you have natural illumination inside the house. And that's its orientation.
Yeah.
And all the, the things that make a house efficient. What we are not, I don't think we are paying enough attention in general.
So you might be right about that, but I want to make sure that we're focusing on zoning. Because I do, I don't think those are zoning issues. Those are primarily, no. Those are, you're talking about building and energy code issues. And I think we would have a real problem if we start implementing, you know, energy efficiency standards through a zoning code. I think that would, that would be a big problem on, on a few different levels. So I, I think that's a great idea. I don't think this is the committee for that idea. Solar, however, I think you're right on the money there. And that's something that you've been raising now for a couple of years.
Yeah.
And I don't think we've had a full enough exploration of that. And I, you know, so I've, I've now expanded my list to five items. And I'm going to be looking for some volunteers and I will myself volunteer as well. I'm going to volunteer you to do what I'm broadly calling the solar one.
Yeah.
And look into.
I've done it with energy sources.
And, and I think, I think it's an interesting issue because quite frankly, I'm not even sure that, that what we have complies with the Dover amendment, to be perfectly frank. I haven't looked at it in a while, but there have been some decisions in Massachusetts that have really kind of changed that. And so, you know, I would love to hear some, a fuller explanation of what you think makes sense. And, and, you know, talk to Stephanie because I, I think there has been some interest in, in some additional solar. And, and I don't think what we had complied with, with some of the interest. So I, I think, I think this is a worthy thing for us to, to delve into and figure out.
I had actually talked with town council about that because our, what we have in the code, in the zoning code, is pretty specific to the solar photovoltaic overlay district. So we had several projects at Stonehill. We have a proposed project for the Southeastern Vocational School that, that are not in the solar photovoltaic district. And I asked council, how are we able? He said, you know, because you're not, you're, you're working with what you have. So I think we need, we should rewrite that. So it isn't just specific to those districts. And that it can, you know, we can look at it and make sure it's achieving what it needs to. The reason the Southeastern Vocational didn't move forward wasn't because of the zoning bylaw and the way it was written. It was because they, they, I guess they couldn't make it work with stormwater management requirements. With stormwater management requirements. Because you have to capture the runoff.
Right.
You change your stormwater flow pattern when you install the panels. Now, we haven't had a problem with other projects, but. And I think that a lot of the incentives that were making it really economically attractive have sunset.
So, so what I'm envisioning is that when you volunteer for one of these, you know, we'll have, you'll have a conversation with Stephanie about, you know, you know, how you should look, you know, just giving you ideas. And then, you know, we'll go off on our merry way for a couple of months and then we'll all report back. Basically is how I would envision this process going. And then as a group, we can decide, do we think that this, any of these ideas are worth running down? And then we'll get, you know, we'll have some visioning sessions and then get the public involved. And then we'll go through the process that we went before. But I wanted to kind of cast a fairly wide net here to that, a bunch of different ideas that, you know, Stephanie and I have been, you know, bandying about for a little while now. So Amas, are you okay with solar?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I hand that one off?
Can I have a second?
Yeah.
So there were, there were, from point of view of zoning, there were.
Don't forget it, Joanne.
The industrial buildings and the big buildings and the business buildings. But there is also, what do you do in residential? There is actually prospects here. There is, there is someone on another residential area that put the, the, the panels that are not on the roof, they are on the front lawn.
And just to be clear, I don't have any, like, I, when I'm throwing these out there, I'm asking genuinely for feedback. I don't care where it goes. Let's, I want to hear the best ideas.
Yeah.
Can I make one suggestion before we go any farther? We have five right now. If we can get one more, everybody's got one.
Well, then what, what do we think about?
I've got another one.
She's got one, she's got it.
Do you, because I mean, I can, I can expand. If, if people are into this idea, I can add the climate change one. My only, my only hesitation is I don't want this to become a building energy code issue. And we all already have Kathy on the climate change committee.
And there, the town's already paying. No, well, I have a different idea, yes. But just on the climate change thing, I feel like if, if the town is already going to hire consultants to do a climate change plan, I'd kind of be interested to see them do the work and then see what we think is missing potentially. When Kathy, you know, comes back and forth between that committee and, and our board. But the idea that I had is, I don't know where the town stands, but I haven't looked at it into too much detail and I'm relatively new to the town. But I'm thinking about home-based businesses. So sort of your no-impact home-based businesses where you might be kind of, you know, making jam or maybe you're a, you know, a solo hairdresser or something like that. There's a whole movement, not so much yet in Massachusetts, I don't think, but nationally for accessory commercial units, which call it, kind of follow the same model as accessory dwelling units, but look at those small, you know, um, no-impact home-based businesses. Bread bakers and, and things like that. I don't know where the town stands on that, how restrictive it is. Or Stephanie, I don't know if there are lots of people trying to kind of get that kind of thing permitted.
Zoning allows for home-based businesses. It has a, and, and no employee requirement. Like it's, it's just the home base, the family members or whoever is living in, in the house. And that there are no customers coming to the house. So you can run, we had someone who, a chocolatier. He was running a chocolate-making business out of his home with his wife. The question of, you said accessory business? Did you say structures? Because that was when it came to our attention. Because you wouldn't allow, right now, you can allow a, a commercial building on a residential property to conduct that business. The way the bylaw is written, the business has to be conducted fully within the existing residential structure.
But you're saying customers can't actually come to that house?
Yep.
Correct?
Right.
Yeah, so in, in, in my mind, it's thinking about those, like, for example, if you sell chocolate, you can actually have a customer come to your house to pick it up. Or in the key, you have pizza and customers will come to your house and pick up pizza, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Be allowable without permitting.
How, how do we deal with the sheep farm? You remember that case?
The what farm?
Yeah, the sheep farm there.
The sheep farm.
That was a big, that was a big issue. Well, that was in litigation.
In the middle, in the middle of a residential area, someone has the sheep farm. And that was the right to farm, right?
That's, yeah.
You couldn't do anything about it.
But there's also, there's also, I mean, we've, we've seen the, um, we've seen the kennels show up from time to time in residential areas. So, I mean, I, I think it's a really interesting idea, Joanne. And I'm going to go ahead and volunteer you for that. And I'm, I'm going to make it just a little bit broader. And I'm going to call it accessory, accessory uses in structures. Because we, this has come up a few times and there is some, there is some ambiguity, in my opinion, in, in the way that accessory uses is written and accessory structures is defined in our bylaws. And I think, you know, as a starting point, it would be interesting to find out how other communities and perhaps some of these communities that, that have addressed this issue that you're talking about have dealt with that in their bylaws. I think it's a really cool idea. I mean, and it's, and it's a little bit old school. I mean, back before zoning, you know, people would have businesses in their, in their homes.
Well, this is where the concept kind of comes from, yeah.
I think it's a cool, I think it's a cool idea.
After COVID, it's a little different, right? A lot of people working from home.
I think there are a lot more people who have been running home businesses than you would ever.
Oh, absolutely.
What about like?
For sure. Where customers are coming to and from as well, too, with nobody noticing.
You can't, you can't.
Well, less and less, you need, you don't need to see.
Their customers come and go, right? They drop off their kids.
But it's a, it's a protected.
It's a protected one. Okay. Interesting.
That's Dover.
Okay, so we got six. We've got.
Accessories, just by the way, accessories is one of the things that governs that solar panel addition.
I know it. That's why, well, maybe you guys are going to talk. So we've got you, Amas has got solar. Joanne, you've got accessory and home-based businesses. Do I have somebody for single-family zoning? Tahia, look at that.
Yeah, I'll do it if, but only if it can work in with the master plan. I'd like to contribute or just kind of be in there as well. So yeah, that'll connect up right with it, right?
I would think.
The master plan update?
Yes, absolutely.
Definitely.
But what do we, so maybe we need to make sure we're clear. So what, what I'm hearing is a lot of great ideas.
Yes.
Really good ideas. Six, and, and you started this by saying this is not necessarily all going to be done at once. And so at some point, I think after maybe everyone starts gathering information and kind of formulates where, the, the direction they might be going or think that the board and the county might go, is that you prioritize?
Well, so what I.
Ability, everybody, everybody presents, yeah.
So let's, let's, yeah, let's, let's, let's just get everybody assigned one of these first. And then we can talk process because I think that's really important. All right, so Mickey, you've got single-family zoning. How about ADUs? Accessory.
Do you, yeah, do you want me to combine that with the accessory other uses that I'm looking at anyway? It's kind of, as you said, sort of the same thing.
I think they're different enough. Yeah, I think they're different enough because I think with the ADU issue, I'm calling it that, but I think it's really broader than that. I think it's examining, you know, stacked housing and, you know, the small, you know, smaller developments. And, um, you know, adding.
Tiny house on your property.
Exactly, in the back of your, in your backyard, absolutely.
All right, sounds like Kathy's got it.
I got it.
Okay, all right, Kathy. All right.
Kathy, we need to talk because I'm doing a lot of that with other communities. So I have a lot of info I can pass on.
That would be excellent.
And that would be fantastic. All right, next one is we've got Main Street in Washington next.
What's Washington? What did you?
I mean, that's kind of from Queeset all the way out to basically, you know.
Like 106?
Yeah.
It's really, well.
The whole strip?
No. I, I don't think of it as the whole strip. I, I think of it as from Belmont Street, which just north, we include.
Yes.
Down to, to Depot Street.
Yes.
Because then you're getting very, into very different zoning on the north side and each side of those, which at some point in time, I believe.
We should look at, yeah.
Should look at. But it's that Queeset Commercial District where the board has adopted new zoning back in 2016 and expecting that a lot would happen there. We're, we're not seeing nearly as much new development like we're seeing down on.
I thought you meant the area, like, south of Depot, where we've got a lot of empty, you know, retail outlets. And it just seems like there's not a lot going on that used to be there.
Some of the strip malls.
Yeah, yeah, some of them are.
I mean, I don't think it's so limited.
Not, not too far from where Nick was proposing is.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
I thought that's the strip you meant.
So you actually, you have three distinct districts along our areas. You have north of Belmont Street or really north of Main Street because between Belmont and Main Street, you have the NRT, you have Stonehill. So a lot's not going to change.
I'm happy to look at that.
Okay.
I, I mean, I think I've had some questions about, you know, some of the, some of the, you know, lots there and whatnot.
Yeah, definitely. So that leaves.
You know, we have, I'm sorry, can I just?
Yeah, no, 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 go ahead. I'm sorry, I missed you.
So one of the things I, notes I made is whoever's going to work on that, which, which was called the Queeset Commercial District, we pull out the Queeset Commercial District Economic Development Strategic Plan and take a look at that. When that study was done back in 2017, the rec, the, the acknowledgement was that that area is a concentrated commercial district. But then you have this commercial sprawl north and south that kind of pulls away, that that's part of the problem about that district. I don't think it's all of it, but you do have this kind of commercial sprawl. But it's, it's also different. It has its own character north of Main Street and a different character south of Depot Street.
It's funny, I was reading some of the comments on Permanise for the Taco Bell proposal at Five Corners. One of the residents wrote in and said, why don't you put it down on Turnpike Street? There's a whole bunch of open space there and empty buildings. Don't bring the traffic worst to Five Corners. I was like, oh, yeah. Some folks looking at it.
All right, so, well, thank you for volunteering. That leaves me with Main Street, which is, I'm fine with that and it's my backyard anyway.
I do have one more question though about it. I, I haven't fully immersed myself back into the zoning changes that have taken place. Are we pretty much covered on electric vehicle charging? Has that been added into the zoning? Because that's kind of an up and coming thing. It reminded me when you were talking about the solar, you know. We have anything in there that governs?
Is that, is that a zoning issue?
Electric charging station, like a gas station, I guess.
Right, I don't see why it would be different, but.
I, I, again, I think if you're talking, is it something that you can add to cycling review or to new residential development? That they're, they're, they provide for electric vehicle charging? I mean, part of your subdivision requires that they provide the utilities that are needed to support the residents living there.
Is there anything that prevents any of that though? Because I mean, you see it in all these parking lots. I mean, they're, they got.
I just don't know if we have an entity of somebody said, I want to put an electric vehicle charging station on that corner in that commercial lot. Do we have anything that defines it, what it is?
As a standalone, as a standalone, like, business?
Yeah, like Tesla has built their supercharging stations, you know, on highways and whatnot.
Right now, there's nothing that would.
I'm not little. You need someone that.
Of course, I'm not little. If you need someone that actually be making money. I mean, that doesn't happen.
Hey, most of your mic has disconnected again.
I'm not sure.
It costs money and people need to make money out of it. So we can write whatever we want, but if, if there is no business case, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, no, I.
I think the question is, is there something inhibiting? Is there something in the zoning that's inhibiting people from building out charging stations? And is there, is there nothing that's encouraging building out?
Right. Well, it got me thinking. I own property in Plymouth and I happened to be looking at their zoning bylaws this past weekend. Because somebody asked me a question about an empty lot. And I saw they had a whole bunch of stuff in there about electric charging stations. I can go back and read it, you know, see what they've done. Sometimes it's interesting to look at how other towns have covered their zoning.
Well, I, I can tell you, I go to Philadelphia and right there, the people that wants to have charging stations on, on their neighborhood, for example. You cannot park any other car there and parking is an issue. So there, there are complexities related to.
All right. Well, I was trying to add something to the list that just, you reminded me about when you said solar, yeah.
I think we should require bike stations.
Elevated bike paths?
All right. Well, so everyone's got their topic. So let's talk a little bit about, you know, reasonable expectations here. I think, I think in terms of the process, what I would like is for everyone to kind of digest, you know, the, the, the topic for a little while. And I want to give everybody plenty of time. And I know we've got July 4th and the summer coming up. But what I would like is, you know, maybe say 45 days from now, we come back and say, you know, this is going to take X amount of time to just figure out this issue. And then from there, I think we can put together, you know, a reasonable timeframe. I mean, that sounds like the most logical way to do it from my perspective. And then say, you know, look, we need another 90 days to talk to some people and to read this report or whatever it is. And then we can come back and have, you know, a session where it's all of us kind of reporting on what our, essentially our findings are. And then as a group, we can, you know, decide, does it make sense to run any of these issues down or not?
We might want to, in, at, in 45 days or so, have the group talk about who's having a lot of success and then who maybe needs even more time. And that would maybe lead itself to a faster meeting where you have maybe half, two out of the six or three out of the six talk about it. And the rest are saying.
Perfect.
Need, need extra time. It's, this is just going to take longer to digest.
Yeah.
So I think that might make it streamlined a bit if we in 45 days see who's, who's ready for show and tell.
So what, so I mean, probably, so what do we have? What's the meeting, I guess, towards the beginning of August?
August 12th. Do we have an August 12th meeting?
August 12th? Could we, could we just put a note on the August 12th, you know, other business to discuss, you know, potential zoning considerations? Okay. All right. I know Stephanie, I kind of hijacked that a little bit. Oh, sorry, Joanne.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to kind of throw one more thing out there. And I don't know, maybe this is more appropriate as part of a formal master plan process, but it would be interesting to solicit ideas from the community, I think, about what they think needs to change on zoning. I'm not sure how many people have an actual opinion about it, but certainly some of the businesses may when it comes to things like minimum parking requirements and stuff. So I don't know how we go about doing that or if that's something maybe we look towards the future or like I said, wrap it into the master plan. But I think it'd be good to get some community input on it, too.
No, there, there's no question. I think what the goal is for this is to at least provide some structure around that before we take any of these ideas to the community. Because I think if you just, I mean, everybody's always welcome to tell us what they think. And we haven't gotten a ton of that. So this, the, the whole idea is to sort of stimulate that by creating almost like little fact-finding missions. So that we, as a group, can decide, well, these are worth running down or, you know, it looks like there might be some support for this or that. And then we're going to take these ideas and vet them with the community. It's kind of a two-step process, probably more than two steps in reality. But the, the goal was to put a little, almost create a structure around that. So we weren't just kind of going off haphazardly and soliciting.
Oh, yeah. I'm not even, yeah, no, I'm not even thinking about these six areas. I think this is great. But I'm just thinking about the stuff that, what we don't, we only know what we know. And I'm wondering if there are folks in the community who might have other suggestions for us to kind of track down in the future, separate from these six issues that we've already identified.
I mean, I, I, I actually think we know a lot about our zoning. And I, I think the board members do too, just from what we see and what we hear and we know. And I, I think if you, you want to go out and ask folks, you should have, your question shouldn't be just open-minded, tell us what you don't like about zoning, because you'll get a bunch of answers. And, and some of that, and I, I was just re, listening to a podcast by Charles Moran. He is the Strong Towns Planning Advocate. And it was about the effectiveness of public meetings. And if you go and you say, well, what do you think about parking? You will get people who, you know, his example was that are riding bikes every single day. That's how they commute and everything. And they'll tell you there's too much parking, but that's not what they're using. And, you know, a better question might be asking people, how, how did you get here today? What was that like? So, you know, again, like a general question, what do you think about housing? The question, and we tried to do this with the MBTA zoning, is think about your experience with housing and affordability. And if you're an older person living in Easton, what are you thinking about housing as you age? Or as your children grow and you might want them to come back to the community? So I think that it more kind of focused, not just a general, what are you thinking about zoning? Because we will, we will hear a lot.
All right. So the last topic is, I'm actually going to hand it over to you, Stephanie. I know that there's one, one additional chair, or excuse me, planning director update that you wanted to express to us.
Yeah. So talking about zoning and, and property, the town is getting ready to go out with an RFP for the center school. And the board may recall that when the property was first vacated, there was a thought that it might be taken over by a nonprofit. That if an RFP went out, that RFP is going to be looking for recreation-type use. And the zoning was changed from municipal open space, meaning municipal uses or open space uses under the town's management. And it was changed to residential. That would allow outdoor recreation with a special permit from the Board of Appeals. But any indoor recreation is not allowed in the residential district. So there may need to be a zoning change.
So to allow the YMCA to move there?
It will, and RFP will go out and it, it actually will be a request for interest and to see what organizations come back and what proposals come. And, you know, the town will make a decision on what's the best proposal. But there may need to be another zoning change in the law to.
Remind me, with the Yardley Wood Ring was kept separate, right?
Yes.
It's carved out?
Yes. And there's a requirement that they, whatever use retains parking to support the ring.
For the three days it was cold enough last year to skate out?
Yeah, really?
Cue the climate change.
Much to my disappointment, yes. Kathy, can you figure that one out?
Solar panels about that.
Yes.
If you don't like the weather, just wait.
That's right. That's right. We're New Englanders.
Can I just clarify that, that kind of overarching goal for the assignments that we have is to look at zoning opportunities to stimulate growth, more or less?
Yeah, just to, it's just, it's just zoning ideas to see if, if, if we need to update anything or change anything. It's really pretty open-ended. And I wanted it to be open-ended, you know, for everybody to, to bring your, your best ideas. And, you know, come to whatever conclusion you guys think is the best one. All right. Well, thank you all. Thank you for your time and your participation. I think that's it.
Motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
Second kid?
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Adam?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Kid?
Hi.
Weeks? Zygmunt? And Stetsons and I?
Hi.
Have a great night, everyone. Enjoy the game.
Good night, everyone.
That's right.